All right. Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, January 24th, meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, can we call roll, or have you done something?
Councilmember O'Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Tran?
Here.
Councilmember Dovin?
President.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Protem Bridigum?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. May I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to do invocation, and then Councilmember Klaufenstein to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. If everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for everyone gathered here this evening, and for the sense of high purpose that we share. As we consider the items before us, we ask that you would guide us and give us wisdom to make the best decisions for our great city and fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your hand over your heart and face our beautiful flag. I plead after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we break for Housing Authority, I just want to go off script and cover one thing. We're a growing organization as a city. My understanding is we just hired a new employee. Is that right, Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's an important city employee that I would like to introduce this evening to all the city council members. And if I could have Officer Zemija come in and introduce our newest employee. So I'm wondering if maybe Officer Zemija could come in and tell us a little bit about our newest employee, and anything else he wants to share.
City City Manager, Mayor, Council. My name is Corporal Adams Zemija. I'm with the Garden Grove Police Department, and I'm proud to introduce Hart. Her real name is Purple Hart, but she goes by Hart. She's an English Labrador. She's five years old, and she joined the team recently, about a month ago. And she joined the John Reynolds Youth K-9 Foundation, Youth Support K-9 Foundation. She joins Misha and Nellie, so now the police department has three. And I'll be happy to bring her around. You guys can give her a pat. She's very friendly. She just likes to lick and smell and pet and play fetch.
She's like a dog.
Just like a dog, yep.
Awesome. We're very excited to have her on board. We'll give her a few more minutes to make the rounds.
Oh, yeah. It's the first one. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll get a picture real quick. Yeah, we love it.
One picture right here. Oh, yeah, I'll go.
How's my hair? They both look good from here.
Hold on. Hold on. Sorry, can't get you counsel.
Thank you guys a bunch for coming in. It's a nice treat. All right. We will now dive into the Housing Authority, so I will hand it over to Chair Bridigum.
Housing Authority, there we go. Get this thing to work. Okay. We'll start with, we'll open the Housing Authority. We start with roll call.
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner Tran?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Here.
Commissioner Dovin?
President.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Chair Bridigum?
Here.
And let the record show that Commissioner Tan Nguyen is absent.
So, our first item here is Oral Communications. Is anybody wishing to address the Housing Commission? Not the Council, but the Housing Authority? We have one? Okay. Step forward, state your name.
My name is Velvet Yvette Victorian. I live on Marin Drive in District Two. I'm formerly from Los Angeles. The Housing Authority helped me to get housed really fast. They were really on their A-game. But since, I've had a lot of problems with my manager, and it seems as if these problems I've had in almost every city I've ever lived in. And it's mainly inspection problems. And I realize that the last two years, they probably did the inspections virtually. So they got away with a lot of stuff. And this is one of the primary causes of homelessness, especially for the aging. Because a lot of aging adults don't like to speak up, like I am here. Nobody in my building would come here and talk about this. They'd be scared for retaliation, because landlords oftentimes retaliate against people, and I'm still trying to figure out why they prey on poor people. Well, this situation that I've had, not only have I had the heater to go out, and I guess I don't know if they did the inspection virtually, but he put a new cover. I could be inspector myself, and a detective. So, he puts a heater cover to make it seem as if it's a new heater. So I call the gas company, and they come back out, because I call them right after they leave and put a heater in, because I could blow up in there. So I call them back, they red-tag it again, and so they come back, they red, they fix it again, but I noticed that this guy who's fixing my heater doesn't have anything checking the carbon. So he can't be doing his job. So, they come back, so eventually they had to put in a new heater. So now, the stove went out, the oven, because it's like the, the building is built like in the 60s, when I was born. So, it has an old type oven, the smaller one, but I think it has some kind of electrical complications, because it went out, the first one, then the guy came in and fixed it, it went out again, came back and fixed it again, and then they finally replaced it. But now it went out again, two, like, I've had it like a month and a half. So the first thing, and that's why I'm here, because he pissed me off then, that it's user, like, I did something to the oven. And see, they're using unlicensed professionals to fix these properties. My garage door fell on my car. But my, and then, I, you know, to show my appreciation, when I first moved there, the first time I paid rent, I paid rent, and I got my checks, my statements, three months in advance, just to show them that, you know, you didn't have to rent to me, and to hopefully, and I told them this, hopefully you'll continue to help people that need help out. So this is my appreciation, and I gave them. Do you know he act like he didn't get the check? And these people are now working with the post office, because I only have a PO box office on it. So, I send it certified, but not where you have to sign, it just shows when it gets there. So it never got there, and it's from, from Garden Grove to Yerba Linda, and it didn't get there until I called the postal in general. Then, so that's almost $3,000 I done paid the man. So now, last month, I split it in two payments, because my rent went up, because I'm trying to get back to work, and get my life back on track, and get off this mess, right? He act like he didn't get the other half of the check. So I sent him a copy of 82 people that have been busted at the post office for stealing people's mail and washing the checks. So then, he came over there and served me a three-day notice. Because I guess he got mad, because I pulled his whole car. But, these kind of things, they need to do some type of way where people don't have to use the mail. There should be other options than the mail. Because a lot of old people lose their, their check stubs. They're, and so if you ain't got that, you don't have proof that you paid rent, and this is another way that they can evict people.
Ma'am, your time is up. Can you kind of speed it up here?
Okay. So I just want them to do a better job in inspecting properties, because somebody can get hurt. And also, a better way, make some type of way that landlords have to be able to, a seamless way of paying your bills. Because that's another gang. And it's, and I really want to thank you guys, and the Housing Authority, because you guys were great. I'm telling you, I look totally different than the last time I came in here. I was sleeping in my car. And I had to fake it and went on a trip until I could find me a place. But the Housing Authority did an excellent job, and I'm glad it's ran by the city and not some nonprofit organization like the last place, and I won't say what name. Take care.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address the Housing Authority? Okay. Seeing none, I will close Oral Communications. And we will move on to Item Two, the Reorganization selection of Chair and Vice Chair. We'll open it up to members.
I'll nominate George to continue as Chair, if you want to. Thank you.
Kim as Vice Chair.
Okay, we can do that.
Can we do that together?
George and Kim, yeah.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, and I, huh?
I have a motion.
Okay. And a third. I guess we'll call for the vote.
Okay. Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Chair, President, Chair Bridigum, I'm sorry. Chair Bridigum.
We're chair forever, I want to hear.
Chair Bridigum.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Dovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion received. Eight yes votes.
All right. Move on to Item Three-A. Receive and file the Garden Grove Housing Authority Annual--
This is consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we do it simultaneously? Or we could do--
Yeah.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay.
I can call for the vote.
Okay. Vice Chair Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Dovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion received. Eight yes votes.
All right. Move on to Item Three-A. Receive and file the Garden Grove Housing Authority--
This is consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we do it simultaneously? Or we could do--
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
I can call for the vote.
Okay. Vice Chair Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Dovin?
Aye.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion received. Eight yes votes.
All right. And we will go to Matters. Does any, any Matters members? Okay. Seeing none, we will adjourn. The next regular meeting of the Housing Authority will be Tuesday, February 28th, at 5:30 PM. Is that right? 5:30?
Yeah.
For posting reasons.
Oh, okay. In the Community Meeting Center? So we are adjourned. Move back to Council.
All righty. Thank you, George. We will reopen City Council, and that takes us on to Oral Communications. I do have a handful of cards. We'll wait just one second. No, I'm good. All right. Isabel Stevens.
Hello. Did you want to go first? We're from, we're from the library. My name is Isabel Stevens. I'm the Branch Manager at the Garden Grove Chapman Library. This is not the big library, that's Teresa's library. Mine is a smaller library on Chapman and Magnolia. I wanted just to let you know about some upcoming programs at the library. We have book groups, of course, as always. Come if you read the book, if you didn't finish the book, and if you didn't even start it, come anyway. We don't judge. We have them for teen, adult, and for children. We have teen on Saturdays, adult on Mondays, and kids on Wednesdays. We do, of course, offer preschool storytime and baby and toddler playtime. Those are on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the morning. On Wednesdays, when school gets out early, we do offer some programs that start at 2:00. Kids are out at 1-ish, so they come at 2:00, and we are happy to see them. We're doing a Valen's Slime Program, Valen's Slime Day, on February the 11th, where we're going to have a book and make slime for Valentine's Day. And then for adults, we have an adult craft program. We're starting that back up at the Garden Grove Chapman Library. So we're going to do tote bags, design and make your own tote bags. And then we have some drop-in tech help programs that we have coming up. So there's something for everyone, please come see us at the library. I also wanted to take a minute to publicly thank the Garden Grove Police Department, particularly Officer Ortiz, and the entire SRT unit, for helping us with some issues that we've been having over at the library and here at Park the past few weeks. So their help in keeping the library a safe and welcoming space for the surrounding community has been very much appreciated. And I wanted to go on record and let their bosses, I think he left, but know that we appreciate their, their help and their quick response. It's, it's very, very much appreciated. Teresa, did you want to say anything?
Really quick, I just wanted to update everybody on a few new programs that the Garden Grove Main Library has started since we were last in here, but it turns out, it's a lot of the same programs that you'll be able to get at Garden Grove Chapman. We have started up our toddler playtime, where children can develop social skills and some manual dexterity that they'll need in order to start kindergarten, ready to go. So we have toddler playtimes again. We have started up our crafting class for adults with developmental disabilities, so that's going to be happening monthly. We offer tech help by appointment. We're starting our Teen Tuesdays program again, so we're going to be starting some teen programming. We're starting an ESL conversation group, so we'll be offering that in the library. And that is all of our new programming. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris Pacoris.
Good evening. So nice to see everybody's face.
Nice to see you.
Some new faces I haven't met before, so, thank you. Good evening, members of the Council. I am Chris Pacoris. I'm a Garden Grove resident in District Four, and I've lived and worked in Garden Grove for over 50 years. I recently retired, and I worked as a Community Liaison Officer with the Garden Grove Police Department, educating our residents at neighborhood meetings and community events in local resources and public safety. I also was involved in multiple community health coalitions, such as the Tobacco and Vapor Free, or Vape Free Orange County Coalition. I'm here to discuss a health issue facing this community, and I'm asking for your help. We'd like to talk about secondhand smoke in multifamily housing units, we have a lot of those units in our city. I feel exposure to tobacco, smoke, and vape fumes in multifamily housing units is deeply affecting our community. I feel it should be considered a major health concern, and especially for those living in affordable housing. These families have seen COVID, unemployment, inflation, educational challenges, and housing issues, similar to what we heard earlier. These issues create stress for struggling families. They work hard to provide a better life for their family members, only to come home to unhealthy air quality in their living spaces. Many families and individuals have limited access to healthcare and proper nutrition. They reside in very small, basic spaces, and many have very close quarters. These conditions can make families more vulnerable to side effects of secondhand smoke and fumes from vapes in the area. This exposure can lead to respiratory issues. The damage done by chronic respiratory infections can and do have lifelong effects on our residents. Our senior communities have suffered from a lifetime of exposure to unhealthy air qual, air quality. We all know this can lead to more serious conditions, such as cancer and other diseases. Currently, our Orange County health youth are facing major respiratory viruses that could have lifelong effects on their futures. This is why I'm here tonight. Smoke-free policies create healthy environments and encourage people to quit smoking, take ownership of their own health. In recent surveys, in the 19, excuse me, 2019, 2020, 24% of Garden Grove residents stated they would prefer to live in completely smoke-free buildings, while 89% stated they would support a policy requiring some units in buildings to be smoke-free, and 99% said they believed that secondhand smoke from tobacco and vaping was harmful to their health and that of their loved ones. We're all educators. Our actions can and do influence those around us each day. We lead by our example, and we can affect positive change. Your leadership in making policies for healthier living spaces can change lives. Don't waste this opportunity to offer a better future to our citizens here in Garden Grove. I ask you to prioritize the health of our community by protecting residents from all the ill effects of secondhand smoke. Smoke-free housing products are our most, excuse me, smoke-free housing protects our most vulnerable residents who live in concentrated housing. I thank you for your time, and I look forward to future talks with you regarding the health and well-being of our wonderful Garden Grove community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Heather Tmilowicz.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Heather Tmilowicz. I'm a clinical psychologist in Orange County, working with individuals and families, and I have been a Garden Grove resident for 14 years. I have three daughters. I'm active in the community. Currently, I'm a Girl Scout leader and Girl Scout Service Unit member, AWSO Board Member, and PTA member at Patton Elementary, where my kids go. I'm here because I am passionate about the health and well-being of our children, and smoke-free multi-unit housing is important, is an important part of that. After I moved out for college, I spent several years apartment living, as I think many of us do, and I have lived in apartments with neighbors who smoked, and I struggled with how to address it. Even, sorry, in one apartment, the neighbors below me were smokers who used their patio often. My roommate and I had to keep our windows closed as to not aggravate our allergies, and my roommate's asthma became a problem in the summer, trying to keep everything closed up when we didn't have air conditioning. It was not only an inconvenience, but a problem for our well-being and our use of our own living space. It is well-known that smoking causes harmful exposure. According to the Centers for Disease Control, 48,000,000 people die from tobacco-related diseases every year, and 41,000 people of those deaths are from secondhand smoke. Providing smoke-free environments for families to live in is an impactful way to prevent disease and illness. In the survey conducted in 2019 and 2020, 84% of Garden Grove residents surveyed stated that they would prefer to live in a completely smoke-free environment. Furthermore, exposure to secondhand smoke disproportionately impacts already at-risk communities, such as racial minorities and economically disadvantaged populations. These populations often have less access to healthcare and are therefore more vulnerable to the diseases offered by secondhand smoke. I urge you to protect your constituents by prioritizing their health and allowing them to live in safe, smoke-free environments. It is crucial we help, support the families that by eliminating the exposure to carcinogens many are experiencing due to second and thirdhand smoke in their homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ariana Savala.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Staff. My name is Ariana Savala, and I'm the Director of Enrollment Quality and Compliance at Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Orange County. On behalf of our Board, staff members, mentors, and the youth we serve at Big Brothers, Big Sisters, I would like to express our deep appreciation for your partnership, and to wish you all a happy National Mentoring Month. January honors National Mentoring Month, a season to acknowledge those dedicating time as mentors to young people, amplifying our young people's voices, and reminding our community that we too can pay it forward to the next generation. Big Brothers, Big Sisters is all about mentorship. While we have been serving students for over 60 years, for the past 10 years, we have impacted over 6,000 youth in our county. While we all have notions of what mentoring means, let me reintroduce you to what mentoring looks like at Big Brothers, Big Sisters. It's Jedi-focused, meaning that we are about justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. We are one-to-one, volunteer-driven, and youth-centered. Our mentoring programs are proven to clear a path to success by breaking social barriers, closing opportunity gaps, developing the future workforce, and overcoming adversities like poverty, homelessness, for all of our young people. We have four driving outcomes: social capital, connectedness, social, emotional, and mental health, education and career success, and positive behaviors and choices. What we do works. 98% of our students graduated high school on time, with 43 of those being the first in their family with a diploma. 67% of our youth are the first in their families this year to attend college. We aspire to create more caring and connected communities, driving tangible results back to your own Garden Grove. In honor of National Mentoring Month, I would be remiss if I did not invite our esteemed officials, audience, and those watching to be a mentor with us. With the impact we have at Big Brothers, Big Sisters, if we could mentor every third grader in the city of Garden Grove, imagine what that would look like. Think about the ripple effect. Strong communities, thanks to the results of when we volunteer, when the community gives back, and stronger communities with youth-supported reach their full potential. Thank you for being a partner and champion for mentorship and youth. Happy National Mentoring Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Velvet, but was that the one who already spoke on her Housing? Okay. Okay, that's the last card I have. Anyone else wishing to speak that did not turn in a red card for Oral Communications? All right. We will go ahead and close, whoops, where'd I go? Yeah. We'll go ahead and close Oral Communications, and that'll take us on to other legislative bodies, so we will move over to Successor Agency. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Member Bridigum?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
President.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neal?
Here.
And Chair Jones.
Here.
All right. We already did Oral Communications simultaneously with Council, takes us on to Consent Items. Do I have a motion for the two?
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right. Any Matters from Agency Members? Seeing none, we will adjourn over to Sanitary District, and I'll hand it over to President John O'Neal.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'll now call the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board of Directors meeting to order. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Member Bridigum?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
President.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
And Chair O'Neal?
Here.
Thank you. Well, now, we already had Oral Communications simultaneously with Council. We'll go to Item Two, Reorganization. We'll need to select a President and a Vice President. Do I have any?
So, I believe the Vice President is vacant now. Your President, would you like to continue serving as President?
Yeah, I'll continue, yeah.
Would I throw up our newly-elected, or anyone else? developing the future workforce, and overcoming adversities like poverty, homelessness for all of our young people. We have four driving outcomes: social capital, connectedness, social, emotional, and mental health, education and career success, and positive behaviors and choices. What we do works. Ninety-eight percent of our students graduated high school on time, with forty-three of those being the first in their family with a diploma. Sixty-seven percent of our youth are the first in their families this year to attend college. We aspire to create more caring and connected communities, driving tangible results back to your own Garden Grove. In honor of National Mentoring Month, I would be remiss if I did not invite our esteemed officials, audience, and those watching to be a mentor with us. With the impact we have at Big Brothers Big Sisters, if we could mentor every third grader in the city of Garden Grove, imagine what that would look like. Think about the ripple effect: strong communities, thanks to the results of when we volunteer, when the community gives back, and stronger communities with youth-supported reach their full potential. Thank you for being a partner and champion for mentorship and youth. Happy National Mentoring Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Velvet, but was that the one who already spoke on her housing? Okay. Okay, that's the last card I have. Anyone else wishing to speak that did not turn in a red card for Oral Communications? All right, we will go ahead and close, whoops, where'd I go? Yeah. We'll go ahead and close Oral Communications, and that'll take us on to other legislative bodies, so we will move over to Successor Agency. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Member Brightigum?
Here.
Member Tran?
Yeah.
Member Dovin?
President.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neill?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here.
All right, we already did Oral Communications simultaneously with Council, takes us on to consent items. Do I have a motion for the two? Call to vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, any matters from Agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn over to Sanitary District, and I'll hand it over to President John O'Neill.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'll now call the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board of Directors meeting to order. If the clerk could please call the roll?
Member Brightigum?
Here.
Member Tran?
Yeah.
Member Dovin?
President.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
And Chair O'Neill?
Here.
Thank you. Well, now, we already had Oral Communications simultaneously with Council. We'll go to Item Two, Reorganization. We'll need to select a President and a Vice President. Do I have any?
So, I believe the Vice President is vacant now. Your President, would you like to continue serving as President?
Yeah, I'll continue, yeah.
Would I throw up our newly-elected or anyone else have an interest in serving as Vice President for this, for Sanitary District Board? It's just during our council meetings. Okay. I would like to nominate John O'Neill for President and Cindy Tran for Vice President.
Second.
Great. I have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're all organized now, so we'll go on to consent items. I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Velvet?
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you very much. Any matters from Board Members? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn until the next regular sanitary meeting in February twenty-eighth in this chamber at five thirty PM. Thank you. I'll back, back to Council.
Alrighty, we shall reconvene City Council, and that takes us on to consent items.
Move to approve?
A second.
I understand that Councilmember Dovin wanted to pull Item Two A forward.
Okay, any other requests to poll any items?
I'll move the balance.
A roll call vote on the balance.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, Item Two A, as requested by Councilmember Dovin.
This is a proclamation that we're just gonna file with our city. It's not going to be presented to anybody, if I may read it, Mayor and Council. It's a proclamation celebrating January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, as the Lunar New Year. That's the first of our lunar, even though today's a couple days later. Whereas, Garden Grove enjoys the privilege of rich diversity that includes the internationally-known "Little Saigon," in quotes. And whereas, "Little Saigon," in quotes, is the home of the largest Vietnamese-American population and is fortunate to share its rich and vibrant culture. And whereas, Tet, or the Vietnamese Lunar New Year, is one of the most important celebrations in Vietnamese culture. And whereas, Tet Nguyen Dan, which means Festival of the First Morning of the First Day, celebrates the arrival of spring based on the Vietnamese calendar. And whereas, those born in the Lunar New Year of two thousand twenty-three are thought to be happy, sensitive, gentle, gifted, reserved, ambitious, nice to be with, affectionate, and charming. And whereas, Tet is an occasion to share traditional foods, enjoy family reunions, and to forget about the troubles of the past year and hope for a healthy, happy, and prosperous new year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, be recognized in Garden Grove as the Vietnamese Lunar New Year and to hope this Lunar New Year brings good health, happiness, and prosperity. January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three.
Does that move for a vote?
Second.
All right, call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to Item Three, Public Hearings. We do have one agendized, Item Three A.
Item Three A is Adoption of Resolutions for a Mitigated Negative Declaration and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program and Site Plan Number SP one eighteen twenty-two and Tentative Track Map Number TT one nine two three-two for the development of a thirteen-unit residential small-lot subdivision and the introduction of first reading of an ordinance approving planned unit development number PUD zero one eight twenty-two entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove approving planned unit development number PUD eighteen twenty-two to establish residential planned unit development implementation provisions and standards of development for property located at nine zero seven one, nine zero eight one, and nine zero nine one Lamson Avenue. Assessors' parcel numbers one three three, one eight three five five, five six, five seven, and five eight. And Ms. Medrano is here to give the report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The project site for this item tonight is comprised of four parcels with a combined area of one point six acres and is located on the north side of Lamson Avenue between Magnolia Street and Laurel Lane Street. The site was previously improved with three dwellings, but those have been demolished and it's currently vacant. Staff would like to provide an overview of the project and the project design. The project site will be accessed from a main entrance located on Lamson, and the residential lots will face an internal private street that will be improved with parallel parking for guests on both sides. Additional guest parking will be located toward the rear of the site, as you can see, on, on each side of the drive aisle. There will also be common recreation space toward the rear of the site, and there will be internal walkways to provide pedestrian access throughout the site. Each residential lot will be improved with a two-story dwelling, also an attached two-car garage, a driveway for two parking spaces, a private rear yard, a front yard, and side yards. The development, as well as each lot, complies with the required front, side, and rear setbacks that apply to small-lot subdivision projects. The project also satisfies the requirements for a fifteen-foot by twenty-foot private recreation area in the rear yard. And as mentioned before, there will be common recreation space located to the rear of the site. This does comply with the common recreation requirements for this type of project, and it will provide some amenities that include playground and built-in bench seating. As far as parking, the parking does provide fifty-one total parking spaces, and these will, of course, be provided in the two-car garages. That's a total of twenty-six spaces between the garage, within the garages. Thirteen of the required parking on the driveways, and then a total of twelve open guest parking spaces. And this does exceed the minimum required parking for this type of project. The project will as well provide decorative wall along the perimeter of the site and also vinyl fencing for each, to separate each individual lot and to provide some privacy. The front block wall will be set back ten feet from the front property line, and this area will be improved with landscaping, trees, and ground cover material, and this is in an effort to provide a sense of neighborhood arrival to the site. All setback areas and all the areas that are not designated for walkways or parking or drive aisles will be fully landscaped and automatically irrigated and will comply with the city's water efficiency guidelines. There are two unit types proposed in this project. They're both designed in Spanish and a contemporary Spanish architectural style. The plan before you is Plan P One, and this plan consists of five bedrooms, three bathrooms. And as you can see here, there is a front porch area, and of course, we've discussed the two-car garage. And Plan P Two, this plan is a slightly larger floor plan in that it provides an extra fourth bathroom and an office on the second story. But this plan is also a five-bedroom unit. On December first, two thousand twenty-two, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing to consider the planned unit development, site plan, and tentative track map for approval of this project and the associated site improvements. There was one speaker from the public that came forward to speak with some concerns regarding the density, however, did overall express support due to the project being less dense than it could have been under the allowed density. We also received a letter of support from the association from the Development to the West of the site, also in support for the project. And by a vote of four oh, with two commissioners absent, the Planning Commission did adopt resolutions recommending that the City Council adopt a mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for this project and approve the planned unit development, site plan, and tentative track map entitlements. The approvals of the site plan and the tentative track map, along with the related conditions of approval, are contingent upon City Council's adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for this project, as well as adoption of an ordinance approving the planned unit development. Staff has reviewed the city, the city's Housing Element Science Inventory list, which includes two of the four parcels within the site, as having a realistic capacity to each accommodate one above-moderate-income unit. This project does propose thirteen above-moderate-income units, so there are eleven above-moderate units in excess of what the realistic capacity identifies in the city's Housing Element Sites Inventory list. In addition, staff did review the SB three thirty compliance for this project. The city does require that applicants for housing developments, development projects, complete a replacement housing determination form and provide the necessary information and income level information for the existing tenants. As I mentioned, there was three dwellings that were previously on this site. Both the applicant and the tenants of those homes signed those forms indicating that they were not of lower or very low income levels. Therefore, this project's not required to replace any protected units. Staff therefore recommends that the City Council conduct a public hearing, adopt a resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration and an associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project, introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance approving planned unit development number PUD dash zero one eight dash twenty-two, and adopt a resolution approving site plan number SP dash one one eight dash twenty-two and tentative track number TT dash one nine two three-two, subject to the recommended conditions of approval and the adoption and effectiveness of the ordinance approving planned unit development number PUD dash zero one eight dash twenty-two. This concludes staff's report, and we're available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any clarifying questions or comments from staff, from Council of Staff at this point? Yeah, please go ahead. Hold on. Note that this is a public hearing, so we're gonna open up to public hearings. So, it's not to deliberate now, but just to ask any clarification questions.
Oh, I just want to know if they consider affordable housing benefit related to the developer just because, you know, now that we have thirteen units and in our city we want to promote, you know, affordable housing, and I was just curious if the developer considered that?
The developer did not propose affordable, affordable housing component as part of this project. The city does have ordinance in place to incentivize affordable housing, and so does the state, but it is not a requirement of the city. So, in this case, the developer did not propose affordable housing units, and since the existing units are also not protected units, they were not required to replace any of those units as affordable units.
Okay, thank you. I'll comment after the public hearing. It's not a question.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can we disclose who the developer are and if they've developed in our city in Garden Grove, what their reputation is?
The developer is PLC Communities. To my knowledge, they do not have a project in Garden Grove. I know they have other projects in Southern California, but we can have the developer speak a little bit more about his experience.
They're, they're here. We're gonna hear from them in a minute once we open the public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, why don't we go ahead and open up the public hearing? I do have a couple cards, starting with Maureen Blackman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. I did speak at the planning, I'm Maureen Blackman. I live in the neighborhood of this project. I'm at Lamson and Gilbert. I spoke at planning, and I said, as hard as it is for me to say, I am in favor of the project. I think the developer has done a very good job of mitigating parking, adding landscape, and they have not asked to over-exploit the high-density bonuses. I really appreciate that in the area. There could have been much higher density in this project. I look forward to them coming in, building it quickly. I see a lot of projects in our city that are approved but stagnant, and I appreciate all the developers done to mitigate those risks. So, I'm in favor of it in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Holman from PLC Communities.
Good evening. Thank you, Mary, for your staff report. Good evening and Happy New Year to Mayor Jones and the Council Members. My name is Bill Holman. I am the Vice President of Land Development for PLC Communities. We're a private home-building company based in Newport Beach. We have extensive land development and home-building experience. In Orange County, we've developed a couple very successful neighborhoods in the city of Westminster, Huntington Beach, Brea. We're also active in the Inland Empire and San Diego Counties as well. Tonight, I'm requesting the Council's final approval on our application for thirteen new detached, single-family homes on the vacant infill site near the intersection of Lamson and Magnolia, as recommended by your city staff and approved by the Planning Commission at their hearing, excuse me, on December first. We've worked very closely over the last sixteen months with your city staff, the surrounding neighbors, to make sure that our development fully complies with your general plan, with your small-lot subdivision ordinance, and is a good fit for the neighborhood in which we're developing. I, I think Mary pointed it out, but I wanted to reemphasize that our, our site plan does meet all of the city's required height, setback, open space, parking, fire safety requirements. We have a total of sixty-four parking spaces for our thirteen homes, so we think we've exceeded the requirements by thirty percent there. Last summer, as part of our development review process, we conducted a community outreach meeting. We invited eighty-six property owners within the three hundred feet of the project. We had five neighbors attend the meeting, mostly from the adjoining neighborhoods, and we're cooperating with the residents in the HOA of Lamson Court directly to our west to repair some wall damage to their perimeter wall that was caused by the, the prior use of the property and overgrown vegetation. The, the city had an environmental assessment prepared to evaluate the environmental impacts of the development, which concluded there are no significant environmental impacts created by the development, no traffic, water quality. All those impacts have negligible impact. Also want to emphasize that we are not requesting any density bonuses. We're not requesting any variances. We're not requesting any special concessions from the city for this development. I want to point out one thing. The staff report indicated there would be no financial impact. However, our project does actually generate a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in park fees for the city. Overall, we have about two hundred thousand in development impact fees we'll be paying, plus another hundred and forty thousand dollars in plan check and permit fees, not to mention all the ongoing ad valorem tax assessments. So, I do want to especially acknowledge Mary, the planning staff, your engineering staff for doing a very diligent, professional review job. They were always very responsive to my endless emails. And I also wanted to thank LSA, who prepared the environmental assessment on budget, on schedule. We're very thankful for that. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that may come up from the Council or any of the, the public hearing and request Council's approval this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Before you sit, any questions of the developer? George?
Yeah, just one. If approved, how long would you begin construction?
We are anxious to start. We are anxious to start grading as soon as we can get our grading plans approved. So I'm hopeful that we could break ground sometime in April, May, if, if we get our plan checks in and through. We're very anxious to get started.
What is the build time? If you were, if you were to break ground, what's the anticipated build time?
It's probably about nine months. It's a small site, to do the grading, the improvement installation, and actually, homes we'd hope to get permitted in this calendar year.
Joe?
I guess you've built another area, so I was kind of mute to ask that whether you've adequately funded, and you're not going to sell the project to some other developer. You've planned for the funding, and you're going to hire locally as much as you can?
Yes, sir.
I'm satisfied, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the developer?
Okay.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, that's all the cards I have for this item, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Colleagues, what's your pleasure?
I have no questions, but I'm really excited about this project. It's one of the best projects I've seen come forward in a while that is below maximum density. I mean, we don't have to always cram everything in, and this, fitting in this neighborhood, like Speaker Maureen said, she lives in the neighborhood, this kind of fits that neighborhood and that, and that space, so I'm excited to move to approve this.
I'll second that, but I just wanted to make mention of, I appreciate the water efficiency. The Spanish style, I think will be really aesthetically pleasing and a nice addition to the neighborhood. Obviously, I appreciate your, from PLC Communities, thank you for that, about discussing the park fees and developmental impact fees and so forth, and how that obviously is a benefit to the city. I did notice, though, just kind of a side note, the Planning Commission was a 4-0 vote. Obviously, just looking ahead to Planning Commission meetings in the future, I'd, I'd like to see better attendance moving forward at some of those planning meetings, especially when we have projects of this scope coming before them. And then my only other thing was four bathrooms, wow, I can't even imagine what that would be like. But otherwise, yeah, this will be a great project and great for Garden Grove.
Lot of cleaning.
Man, oh man.
Go ahead, Joe.
If I may comment also before we roll time, I think this is very positive development, and it's rare that we get a VP of the developer come here to give a presentation and take our questions, so we appreciate you coming here, Mr. Holman. It's very refreshing to see we have some developments coming into the city, and again, it's helping with our coffers, so there's no objection there. And you've done a tremendous job with, working with the neighbors and the residents, and I appreciate Ms. Blackman coming here and giving us a vote of confidence for moving forward, and I'm not going to hold you back. 16 months is, is a good, good, long time to move everything, particularly in the past few couple of years that we've had issues, but hopefully you'll be one of our pilot project, and if you may invite more developers to our area. I only had an issue because we have a letter kind of objecting to it with regards to low-income housing, but obviously, the three residents that displaced have signed off on it, they're not low-income, and you, there's no obligation to replace those. So thank you, Mary, and your staff, for a very good report, and I'm going to welcome you to the city, and I'm going to hold you to the nine months. Let's check back in nine months.
Yeah, I'm really excited as well. Only, you know, very rarely do we see a development come in that's appropriately parked, you know, and, and you're not asking for any shoehorning in and all the things, so it, this is kind of refreshing to see an actual professional development come in here without trying to cram everything into a little piece of property, right? So, you know, really excited, and I hope it catches on.
We have a motion and a second? Let's call the vote. Alrighty, thank you, congratulations to PLC. That takes us on to commission, commission committee matters. Item 4A is consideration to appoint city's commissions, committees, and board. I'm going to ask that we continue this to our next meeting, which I believe is three weeks from now, approximately, into mid-February, or into February, yeah. So, motion and a second, can we call that to vote, just to continue, or do we even need a motion to continue it?
You don't need a motion.
Yeah, okay, so we're just going to continue.
Yes.
Everybody else thirded it. Okay, we'll go on to item five, items for consideration. We do have a couple listed, item 5A.
Item 5A is award a 60-month lease and maintenance contract to Rico USA for 27 multifunction copiers, and Mr. Claus is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. Tonight, I bring forward an item to award a 60-month lease and maintenance contract to Rico USA for 27 multifunction copiers. This lease will replace the existing copiers under our current agreement that expired in June of last year. These devices are used throughout the city for copying, scanning, printing, and faxing, and we're also replacing our production machines used by our rep, uh, reprographic staff for pamphlets, flyers, and booklets. To make this selection, city staff formed a six-member selection committee to conduct a public request for proposal. Ultimately, the city received three qualifying bids, and after consideration, the committee scored Rico USA as the highest scoring of those bids. The term is 60 months, the monthly amount is $11,154, for a total amount over five years of $669,000, I'm sorry, $669,293. We have a $13,000 one-time rebate, which will bring that price down a little bit. And this, to be clear, this amount includes everything except for paper, so it covers the lease for the machines, maintenance, labor, and parts, and toner. The new copiers also have additional capabilities. They can print faster, they can scan faster, they have optical character recognition, so if a PDF is scanned through them, it makes it really easy to search for the text inside that PDF. And most exciting for our staff, it has wireless printing or air printing, so our staff with mobile devices can walk up to one of the copiers and print something directly from their mobile device. So given the results of this RFP, staff recommends that city council award a 60-month lease and maintenance contract to Rico USA for 27 multifunction copiers in the amount of $669,292, with a $13,000 rebate, and authorize the city manager to sign the lease and maintenance contract on behalf of the city and make minor modifications as appropriate thereto. That concludes my report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, George.
Yeah, I have a couple, you know, just 27 copiers, and I get it, things have gone up, the price has gone up, but when I, when I do the simple math, 27 copiers, five-year cost of $669,000, we're talking about $24,000 a copier, basically more than what a car would cost. It seems a little excessive, but when you do a quick Google search of what these machines cost, they're actually pretty pricey machines.
They're very sophisticated machines.
Yeah, so, you know, I just want to put that out, you know, for the general public. You know, these things generally run between 30 and $35,000 each, when you just do a quick Google search of the cost. So I know a lot of people will look at this cost, and they're going to go, oh my God, you know what, city council's approving, you know, this, but it, it's actually in line with the current cost of things now, so I just wanted to make that statement. I'll move it.
I want to make a comment, too, and I'm, I'm not too concerned about the, the number per se, because I think we're getting a lot of value, and I trust that the staff has gone through their, their diligence to get, research, but I, I just want to know that, did we have a different contractor previously? We had one. And factoring for the differences in maybe cost, are they coming in very competitively?
This contract was not the cheapest bid that we got, but based on all of our scoring factors, it was the, it did score the highest in the RFP.
Okay, I'm satisfied with that, but I want to add for the record going forward, because this will expire in five years. I'm thinking, maybe we can have a shorter-term lease, because it seems like a big amount when you go out 60 months. If you go out 48 months, it'll be a little more palatable. And also, to see if any of the 27 machines are duplicative, as far as being in offices that we can share machines, and try to reduce the numbers of machines down to, say, 25, 22, versus next time we have to vote on this, it's going to be 30. So I, I need some sort of promise from staff that going forward in five years, it might be me, might be some other on council, but I don't want them to have a bigger bill, and our needs would grow unless it's justified, so I want that on the record. That's it, thank you.
So, this agreement is for 27 copiers, our, the previous agreement that we're replacing was also for 27 copiers. We do not ever plan on, well, we don't, certainly don't plan on, I can't make any, I don't know if I can make a promise, but we can certainly do not plan on increasing the number of copiers in our next contract.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, 5B. Anybody want to take a break, or are we good?
We might as well power through it.
Well, okay.
Item 5B is financial analysis summary for a new public safety building, and approval amendments to the professional services agreements with PFAL and Place Works.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a couple of quick, brief comments. We know how important and how high of a priority the building of a new police headquarters is to the community, to all of you, and we've been doing a tremendous amount of work, trying to get to the point where we continue to move this project along. We're excited about the presentation that we're going to make to you this evening, that's going to take us on the next step of building, you know, a major police headquarters for us. So we've had our consultants work, working with us every step of the way, and I've asked Lisa Kim, our Assistant City Manager, Economic Development Director, to give us an update this evening on where we're at, along with our consultants, so I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, City Manager Stiles. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Staff is pleased to advance a report on the preliminary feasibility analysis relating to the future public safety building. By way of background, the council approved a contract with Public Finance Advisory Limited, or PFAL, to undertake an evaluation of potential costs associated with delivery of a public safety building, and this contract was approved last July. So the presentation today is a culmination of all the Phase 1 scope of work that the consultant has completed, and some recommended next steps for the council consideration. So this will be a joint presentation between myself, our consultant, and at the conclusion of a report, myself, the consultant team, and Chief Afara are available for any questions the council may have. So I'm going to transition it now to Victoria Taylor and Caroline Judy, who will kick off our presentation this evening, and I'm introducing Victoria to lead off.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. My name is Victoria Taylor, I'm the President of Project Finance Advisory. My colleague Caroline Judy and I appreciate the opportunity to present our work to, to the city council, and some of our recommendations as well. All right, wait on the screen. There we go. Excellent. So the, the work that PFAL has done, along with our expert team, has really stood on the shoulders of a lot of the excellent and high-quality analysis that the city has performed to date. The one, one report that we do want to, to highlight tonight is the 2020 Dewberry Report, which very affirmatively established that there is a tremendous need for a new public safety facility, and they also went through and, and, and developed a program based on expected growth of the police department through a number, a number of future years. That program ranged from 96,000 to 121,000 square feet, and part of PFAL's role was to come in and validate these findings, really to look for some efficiencies, and to see if there was an opportunity to, to provide a price and set of delivery options to the city. On the next slide. The first step of this process was to define the city's goals, objectives, and vision for the new public safety facility and the park. And to do this, we conducted a number of interviews with city staff, also with police leadership, the mayor as well, really to get a sense for what were the overarching objectives that we found as a common thread between all of these different discussions, with the idea being that these goals and objectives become, are touched on. So throughout the process, we keep going back and making sure that the, the recommendations, the analysis that we're doing, all of it is keeping these primary goals and objectives in mind. With these goals and objectives in mind, we began looking at different site alternatives. On the next slide. So there are a number of important principles that are outlined here that informed our consideration of, of three different sites. Most importantly, of course, is the safety and security of the function of the building. Also, very importantly, was the connection to the community. We understand that there is a lot of work ongoing with the city to activate this particular area, to create a civic center park that is, that can continue to be enjoyed by the full community, but really to revision it, and to try to improve it, and to really enhance the community in a way that is contextually appropriate, but also that meets the very important need of the, the public safety facility and the police department. So on the next slide, we've shown you here the, the, the two different sites that were our finalists. We actually did consider three sites, the third one being the existing site for the, the police department. And this one was quickly ruled out, because that site isn't big enough to build another building and to continue to operate the police function out of the, the existing building. So that would have created a need to relocate all or a portion of the police function to a different site. That is a very expensive proposition. We knew from current cost estimates that it ranged in the tens of millions of dollars. This didn't seem like a good idea for anybody, so we moved on quickly to looking at sites number one and two, that are identified in the map there. Site number one ultimately won the day, primarily because of its size, but also because it gave the city an opportunity to revision and redesign the civic center park.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm Caroline Judy, also with PFAL. So the images that you see on the next slide are, illustrate some of the design concepts that we were working with and using to try to, to integrate the new police station into the surrounding community within the civic center site. In Phase 2, we will identify the design concepts and the city's expectations as part of the request for qualifications package, and we'll be bringing that back to you with more, with more design ideas. And we'll describe a bit later in, in additional slides, the final building design will be created by the, the design builder in Phase 3. But here, what we're doing is identifying some of the concepts that we think we might want to develop further, and these include creating transparency, you know, providing for both a secure facility, but one where we've sort of softened the, the exterior structure, the cladding with glass and some other different kinds of materials. And then secondarily, bringing light into the interior of the building, and the importance of that from a workforce standpoint, and inspiring creativity and productivity and all of that. Then using different types of materials, that's in the lower right image there, on the parking structure, again, helps soften that oftentimes a, you know, solid block of concrete exterior structure, so using different materials and lighting creatively. And then finally, using landscaping to help create welcoming spaces and spaces for reflection and contemplation for staff and, and the community. The next slide, please. So we conducted several different exercises to determine how best to fit the new buildings into the existing area marked 1, as we talked about earlier. Our purpose here was really to use the Civic Center property to its highest and best use, and use it most efficiently, ensure that we had safe access from the Acacia for the police department, the fire department, and then the public that's accessing and coming for services, creating a secure parking lot for the police staff, both for, for their personal vehicles, as well as patrol vehicles, and then creating a, a new community-serving park that really connects to the existing linear park on, on the campus. in into one building, we create more opportunities for a better use of the property overall. Based on our program validation process, we determined that we could fit the 87,000-square-foot building plus a new parking garage with 448 parking spaces next to the existing Fire Department building, which will remain in place, and then create a new 2.3-acre park that really has more opportunities for programming for the community. And at the far eastern end of the property, you see the two properties, Site E and Site 57, which could be consolidated into one to make opportunities for affordable and market-rate housing on that particular site. Next slide, please. These next slides provide us a visualization of the site massing, and they're not really intended to illustrate final design, they're just intended to give us a sense of how the buildings could sit on the site and then how they relate to the surrounding buildings in terms of sort of mass and height. We recognize the real importance of the Euclid and the Acacia corner as we were looking at the buildings and how they related to that corner. We also wanted to retain the memorial space for fallen officers, that was a primary objective, and then also promote, try to have a little bit of a setback for the parking structure so that it wasn't right up adjacent to Acacia, so that it's also structurally separate from the public safety building, and that's important because the public safety building's an essential facility, as you're aware, but we could also provide that secure access between the parking structure and the building itself. And then this final view illustrates our next slide there. The new Civic Center Park and describes the opportunity for that promenade that I was talking about from up Civic Center Drive. And it really, we do this by, as I said, shifting the public safety building and parking to the western end of the property and demolishing the existing building, and then that's creating that additional new park space. Important that we did retain the Orange County Fire Station and the administrative offices in their entirety as part of our objective there. Okay.
Thank you. So this next slide demonstrates that there are a lot of different options that are available to the city to develop this new project. Only a few of these options really met the goals and objectives of the city as we understand them. So reducing risk, creating as much efficiency as possible, both in the cost of the facility but also in the timing of its delivery, expediting the procurement and delivery of the project, and also avoiding privatization. On the next slide, what we show here is the outcome of the cost estimating work that was completed as part of our work. Ultimately, the three different elements, the PSF, the parking facility, and also the revisioned park, have a total price tag at the moment of $108 million. So this compares pretty favorably to escalated costs that we would expect to need to do from the 2020 Dewberry Report. And we also want to mention the housing analysis that was performed is being considered separately. We understand that staff is planning to present on that at a later time. On the next slide. So ultimately, we really considered three different options with the fourth one introduced for comparison. So the first option, the DBB, is a traditional delivery. This is a design bid-build program where the city procures a series of services separately. The next three are opportunities for public-private partnerships, and in these different deliveries, the city transfers a degree of risk to the private sector, and in turn, the private sector delivers the project according to the expectations and contractual requirements that the city lays out. So what you can see here, I think the big standout item for this is that the design bid-build procurement process has the longest timeline at 24 months. While we think that a design-build-finance program that could be negotiated with a selected developer on a negotiated basis could have a timeline of about 12 months, and that's, these are timelines referring just to the procurement process. So the main difference between Option 4 and Option 2 and 3 are the number of steps involved in the procurement. So in Option 4, it's a single-step procurement process where a detailed and full RFQ is delivered to the market with the intention of soliciting high-quality responses from the developers that can include a response to the city's vision and also strategies for financing the project, as well as different concepts that they'd like to introduce to help improve cost efficiency. So those are, that is in comparison to Options 2 and 3 where there's a qualifications shortlisting process followed by an RFP where developers then respond with a hard bid. So that process does take a little bit longer just because of the amount of time it's required to develop the documents that need to be released. So where are we now? We've just completed Phase 1, and now that we've completed that and we've landed on these initial findings, the next phases of work will involve, first of all, getting a SEQA process complete. That is a threshold item that will need to be started before the procurement can start in earnest, but also during Phase 2, the RFQ can be assembled, as well as a marketing of the project that can include a market sounding where the city can go and have conversations with developers about the project. And this serves two purposes. One, to get their feedback about the types of things that they could introduce into the project that might be valuable to the city, but it also helps to generate enthusiasm and really to get the attention of, you know, some of the best and the brightest in the industry who can come and bring their creative ideas to the city and really make sure that they're responding to what the city's main priorities are. So putting together an RFQ that communicates that really clearly is a technical effort that will require the resources of our team, but we think that will yield the best result for the city. In Phase 3, that's the point when you launch the RFQ into the market, the cone of silence drops, and at that point, that's when you select the developer, negotiate with them, and at the end of that process, you have a guaranteed maximum price that was negotiated through an open book process, a design that was also negotiated with the city, including the Police Department, and also with the support and under the watchful eye of our expert team of cost estimators, designers, and commercial people and financial experts who can help the city make sure that ultimately, that the agreement meets the city's expectations, protects the public, and also delivers the project as expected.
If I may, Chief Alfara, just by way of background, the two images on the screen are just examples of further detailing the design that would be included in the scope of work of the respondents to the RFQ/RFP process. So what are the end deliverables? Not only a potential preferred developer for us to advance the design-build concept, they provide the financing structure, but also some further refinement of design for the project, and these are just some ideas and concepts. In closing, staff is seeking concurrence from the council for us to continue advancing this project and accelerate project delivery where we can. In addition to the request to approve amendments for the PFAAL contract to implement Phase 2 and Phase 3 in the amount of $1.1 million, we are also requesting council authority to approve an amendment to the Placeworks contract, and that's associated with advancing community engagement and outreach as we move further into this process for delivery of a public safety building. We have quite a bit of follow-up tasks, especially with SEQA, and so we'll be coming back to the council likely in the next 60 days or so with a recommendation to award a contract to a SEQA consultant to advance that portion of the work. And concurrently at that time, we'll bring back a comprehensive outreach plan for the council's consideration and feedback. I would also, I know that Victoria and Caroline also mentioned, this is intended to be multifaceted. While Phase 2 is expected to be four to five months, our goal is to return to the council with a progress report on work completed to date and then continue to update the council throughout the process of the project. In addition, I would like to make a quick introduction to the council. This is a very complex and technical project that we have added a project manager to the team. I wanted to introduce the council to Craig Beck. He is sitting in the audience. He is the retired Public Works Director for the City of Long Beach that advanced their P3 project and ultimately rebuilt their city hall, and I felt that his background and knowledge in navigating just facilities, O&amp;M, and the complexity of delivering this project to the council, we needed that level of expertise in this next stage of project management. So Craig will be on board to implement side-by-side city staff and the consultant to ensure that we achieve our project delivery of a new public safety building and a civic center park. So this concludes staff's presentation, and we are available, Chief Alfara, the consultant, Craig, if you have any questions, or Craig. We're here to answer any questions the council may have. So this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation, colleagues. Questions? Comments?
I'm excited to see this moving forward in a quick, I mean, it's long overdue. Our Police Department is really constricted in their current location, and they need a little elbow room. You know, the current facility was designed at a time when we didn't have female police officers.
Right.
You know, we didn't have the K-9 unit, we didn't have the number of officers that we have now, and, you know, if you walk through there, and I have a few, it's cramped. It's really cramped. And so, you know, we ask so much from our police day-to-day, and, you know, it's up for us, it's time for us to step forward and do what's right by them. So I'm glad to see this is moving forward.
Motion.
Move it.
Can I speak first? Quickly, I did spend a couple hours with the ladies here, Victoria and Caroline, find them very knowledgeable and reliable in the information they presented, and I said that if I knew that they were behind the OC News building over there, I wouldn't have any questions because that was, that's very impressive. And I like the design, I like the open air. We talked a lot about interface and how the public space and making it friendly for the public, and so that's an ongoing process. But tonight, we're only going to vote on the amendment, so I only wanted to say a couple of things. One is to welcome Craig Beck on board, and we'll be hearing from you a lot, I'm sure, and you'll be hearing from me. I'll give my notes to you as the process moves along, so welcome on board, and thank you, Lisa, for the selection, as well as PFAAL for advising us on that, and we defer to you to refer the other contractors. And lastly, hopefully you come with your own copiers. And that you won't come back with more amendments. Keep it within budget, and we'll be, I would love to approve this time. Thank you.
Would you like to second?
I'll second, absolutely, I would. This is a historic project for our city, and especially our downtown and District 5, for that matter. I'm very excited about this. It's timely and well overdue, and I'm just curious, Lisa, if you can, when would you see the community engagement and those outreach efforts begin?
It will begin immediately. We will upload this presentation and upload our Civic Center Community Engagement website with information. We will be collaborating with Placeworks and with PFAAL on the best next steps, including information, it could be a webinar, it could be further surveys, could be an open house. So it'll be a combination of all the above, but we'll come back with a comprehensive plan.
Fantastic. Well, this presentation was wonderful, so I know anything else that's put together will be to the same caliber, and thank you to you and your staff and to everyone involved, PFAAL as well, in putting this together, and this is very exciting for Garden Grove and for our Garden Grove Police Department. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment. So thanks to Lisa and the team for providing the detailed information the other day when we have the presentation. So I'm really excited, just cannot wait to see this gonna come live, so thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We'll go ahead and call to vote. And this is to move all the staff recommendations and additional actions.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you, guys. All right, that takes us to matters. We do have one listed, Item 6A, and this is an update on the Navigation Center.
Yes, thank you.
As requested by Scott Stansfield.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a much shorter presentation but an equally important presentation. I know our community is very interested in the status of the Navigation Center that is going to start taking some shape now from a construction standpoint. We wanted to bring you up to speed on that project as well, so I think Ms. Kim is going to give us a presentation on that project as well.
Thank you, City Manager Stiles, and good evening again, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm excited to just share an update on what's happening with our Navigation Center project dubbed Central Cities Navigation Center. So if I could ask, Ms. Palmeri, thank you so much, and so I'm going to juggle back and forth. I should shift seats right now. So just a bit of recap for the council and just for our residents and our businesses. We have an active website. It's tied to the city's Addressing Homelessness webpage, and if you link on that, there is a tab which will tie directly to the Central Cities Navigation Center, has all the information about the project background, the scope of the project, the address, the site plan, the history of action items by the council over the last 36 months, including implementation and adoption of the Comprehensive Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness and all the action items that have taken since that adoption. By way of background, the location of the Central Cities Navigation Center is located at 13871 West Street in D6, in District 6, and between New Hope and Harbor on Westminster, and it's on West Street. This is the site plan that we are advancing through development. It will accommodate up to 85 beds as it's currently designed. The area highlighted in red is the entry or intake of our guests to our Navigation Center. The area in yellow is the kitchen and the dining area, as you, all the other areas identified and highlighted in blue, green, and beige, are the dormitories. So the green area is our women's dormitory, the blue is our men's dormitory, and the beige is our couples' dormitory, and we have a couple of flex rooms that you'll notice as well. There will be outdoor areas, a pet area, and a full locker area for our guests to be able to store their respective belongings. Here's our perspective of what the future of the building will look like. It will be gated, access is restricted, there will be onsite security, and I'm very excited to advance this project for council, and so we're looking forward to see this project open by the end of the year. Here's a bit of timeframe of what we're looking at, and just to recap, the Tri-Cities MOU between the cities of Garden Grove, Fountain Valley, and Westminster was executed in which there will be a share of cost of acquiring the property and operating the site. The MOU with the county that would contribute approximately $11.5 million to the project, it's divvied up into two parts. Again, $5.3 million would be earmarked for tenant improvements to the property, and the remaining amount would be dispersed over a 10-year period at approximately $625,000 a year for annual operating. Where we're at right now, we're in the midst of an RFP for our service provider, so this is the nonprofit that will come in and operate the shelter for the Tri-Cities, and so we are in the midst of evaluating a potential service provider, and we anticipate bringing the contract for selection of the service provider to the council at the second meeting in February. What's happening right now is we are also in the midst of a RFP for Construction Management Services, so we're looking for a construction manager to assist us in implementing and ensuring that the project is built on time, on budget, and all the nuances it will take to deliver this project to the finish line. So we will be recommending a word of contract for a construction manager at the, we're targeting the second meeting in February as well. Concurrently, we are at what we call 90% construction drawings and in final plan check with our internal team. Our building and safety is finalizing plan check with coordination with our engineer and water. We are also working with the county to have the healthcare agency plan check our kitchen. So fingers crossed, honestly, if I can get this RFP on the street by next week, and so we anticipate an award of construction for the project sometime in March. Lastly, we are anticipating construction to be six with our internal team. Our building and safety is finalizing plan check with coordination with our engineer and water. We are also working with the county to have the healthcare agency plan check our kitchen. So fingers crossed, honestly, if I can get this RFP on the street by next week, and so we anticipate an award of construction for the project sometime in March. Lastly, we are anticipating construction to be six to eight months. I'll know further when the bids come in for construction and supply materials and all of that. We'll be able to provide the council with a more refined timeframe at a word of contract. Lastly, we need to fixtureize tables, desks, beds, mattresses, laundry facilities, cooking equipment. So once the construction manager and our service provider comes onboard, the collective team between the city, the service provider, and our construction manager will break down all the FFNE that will be required to fixtureize the shelter, and we'll likely be coming back with the council for a word of contract for those items as well. So the goal at the end of the day is to deliver our Central Cities Navigation Center by the end of the year, and this concludes my report, and I'm available if council has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any questions? Comments?
Keep following.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks for the timeline and the presentation. It's great to see this moving forward, full speed ahead. We're all excited about it. All right. That's the only listed matter. We'll go around the horn. Any matters from council members? George?
Sure. Well, first of all, I just want to officially congratulate our brand-new chief of police, Amira Alfara. He was officially sworn in last night, and I know he's gonna represent the city of Garden Grove very well. So there was an item on the agenda tonight. It was 2C, to recall the Bridge to Nowhere bids. I've been around a long time. I'm getting kinda long in the tooth, I guess, but I remember when they built that bridge, and it was very politically charged. That, I think, if I recall, it was about $70,000 to build that bridge, and there was about 30 or 40 members of the community here really, really upset about it, considered it a waste of money. And we're all talking of that bridge that's right out here in front of the Community Meeting Center. Serves no purpose, doesn't even go over any water, it's just there. I inquired why it's there, and, oh, it's a photo op location for people who might wanna rent the CMC and that kind of stuff. I'm like, you know, when you look at the cost, $200,000 to $400,000 to repair that thing, you know, I don't think we'd make that in rental costs at the CMC in 20 years. I just don't see the need for this Bridge to Nowhere to be rebuilt. I think it's more practical to simply put a cement sidewalk there like there used to be there, or put some landscaping. Just one opinion, I remember it got really heated about 25 years ago. A lot of people here were concerned that the city council had lost their mind spending $70,000 to build the thing to begin with, and I don't necessarily feel that we need to spend $200,000 to $400,000 to reconstruct it. It serves zero purpose, and it really doesn't even look that good out there. So with that being said, just my two cents. My last item, Councilwoman Cindy Tran had reached out to me, and she wanted to go in together on an event. So on February 26th, between 9:00 a.m. and 1:00 o'clock, Grease Monkey Garage at Western, I'm sorry, Knott and Chapman, will be holding a catalytic converter engraving event free of charge to anybody in the city of Garden Grove, any resident in the city. You can come, get your catalytic converter engraved for free, and, you know, trying to reduce, everybody hears about all the catalytic converters getting stolen, and, you know, it doesn't keep it from getting stolen. It reduces the likelihood because these refineries that take them in aren't legally allowed to take them in if they're engraved. So most of the time, if a thief sees that it's engraved, they just go to the next car because it's really not worth their time to steal it. But sometimes it happens at the dead night, and they don't see the engraving or whatever. But beyond that, it also helps the police. With the police coming in contact, it's engraved, and the police can identify who it belongs to. And so you have a chance of getting it back, you have, the police have a chance of prosecuting because now they have a victim, they can identify who the victim is. Some of these catalytic converters are $2,000 to $4,000 apiece, and some cars have four of them, right? There was a couple trucks that came through that had four last time I did it. So anyway, Councilmember Cindy Tran and myself will be co-hosting that event on February 26th between 9:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., Grease Monkey Garage, Chapman, and Knott. That's all.
Cindy?
Yes, so a couple items. First one, number, let me see, 2D in the consent item, there was additional cost, the $16,000, just as a common note for the record, that I did ask the staff, why did we have to pay the extra $16,000 after they already gave us a bid? But the staff were able to look into that and confirm after we looked into it, and we know that, you know, the amount that they put reasonable because of the complexity of the work. So I just want to make sure that we have it in the record. And the other item about the housing, I'm an advocate for affordable housing, but when we talk about doing that, we have to trade with the density. So I just hope that out there, somebody out there must come up with some great idea that we still could promote the developer to, you know, to provide affordable housing, but also they don't have to trade with the density, meaning that, you know, you still could get some kind of incentive, but you don't have to, you know, put more houses there or things like that. So hopefully someone out there will come up with some great idea to fix that or to make that happen. And then the next item is Councilman Stephanie Clofson and I are gonna team up on a community event this Friday coming up. We're gonna have an event to have high school students to come to visit a nursing home in our district, Garden Grove, and for my district. And the students will be able to sing and talk to the elder, and we will give our red envelope to the elder and the staff. So I really look forward to that. If any high school student out there would like to have, to do community survey hours, so please reach out to us, and we will make that happen. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, I forgot to report that I attended the League of California Cities State Board Workshop in Monterey from November 30th to December 2nd, and that was paid partial by the league as well as the city for my room and my lodging and my food. So I wanted to report that, and it was a great meeting, got to meet state board members from up and down California. So I know at the last meeting, I was complaining that I'm on a lot of different committees, and I wanted to relinquish some duties, and that was primarily why the state board is a lot more of an exclusive group of league board members. And as the former past president for the OC Division, I automatically got my seat as a state director. So it's a lot more work, a lot more opportunities for the city of Garden Grove, for us to be involved with the League of California Cities, so I wanted to make sure to report that. I also wanted to give a big shout-out to our Garden Grove Police Department, specifically our SRT team. I've been complaining about this, I mean, all of us have, but I've been completely and frequently complaining about Harbor and Trask as a major area for homelessness issues, but mostly on the Caltrans properties. So I do just want to commend staff, Public Works, PD, and Lisa's team for helping out with those issues. It has now continued to spread, and I'm seeing a lot of issues on Garden Grove Boulevard and north of, so going up towards Garden Grove Boulevard on Harbor in the area that is actually bordering councilmembers, Clofstein's district, where the Wells Fargo is, where the T-Mobile, Tasty, that plaza, I can't remember the name, but there's a lot of activity there, so we're gonna have to, it just keeps shifting, right? It doesn't get resolved, it just keeps moving up and around. But I do just don't want to lose sight of the issues with Caltrans because it's an area that's feeding up behind residents, and they're all concerned for their safety and want to make sure that that's being addressed. I feel it's like the millions time that I've brought it up, but it continues to be an issue, and it gets worse and worse. But I do want to note that we did have item 6A, the update regarding the Navigation Center, which is going to be really helpful moving forward, but, you know, you can only ask for patience from residents for so long before they get really mad. And they're there, they've been there, but I just want them to know that we're working as best as we can with the tools that we have to address this issue. And lastly, not that our staff need additional work on their plates, but I just want to note that, you know, as we're driving around our city, going to meetings, seeing things that us as staff and councilmembers, I know most of us do already, reporting some issues with signage, right? A lot of our signs, you can't tell what they are, you can't read it, like the banner sign, the street sign for banner on Euclid, I mean, on Harbor is disappearing. Any signs that we have that have church indications or some sort of, you know, go here for this, you can't read it. It's illegible, and it doesn't look good, and so we really need to bring focus to that. I know I've had several residents send me that information, and I asked them, did you report it on our app? And of course, the answer is no. So publicizing that app more, I would like to see more videos out there about how to use it and someone actually doing like a demonstration. I think I asked for that when we first launched, relaunched. But for instance, today on my way here, I saw that our "Welcome to Garden Grove" sign off of Garden Grove Boulevard west of Harbor was defaced and has graffiti on it, and I know I see Public Works coming through, I see other staff driving this way, and it's, you know, if you see it, report it, do something about it, don't just let it go unseen and unnoticed. Obviously, I didn't report it yet because I was on my way here, so I didn't get to see it and take time while driving to do that. So just a note, you know, this is our neighborhood, it's our backyard, we all have to participate in helping cleaning it, and just don't make the assumption that someone else has reported it. I believe on the app, you can go and look at the map to see if there's an active request for it. Do that. We're neighbors, we're family here, so everyone has to do their part. But staff too should not be shy from also reporting and making it known if they see it when they're driving to and from a location. It takes all of us to kind of do our part to clean up. So if you see signs, areas that have something, an issue, please report it, please utilize the app. That's what staff worked hard to create, and so let's utilize those tools. And that's on here.
Stephanie?
Thank you. Kind of competing with what you're mentioning, the graffiti issues along Harbor have been pretty aggressive as of late, and so I appreciate the team, Lisa, our Assistant City Manager, and Public Works, and our graffiti removal team for really trying to focus on those hot spots. It seems like, you know, they painted out, and then it's back again, and it's this cat and mouse game, but it's important to the community to keep everything looking aesthetically pleasing and just try to be proactive about blight in our community, especially along those major corridors such as Harbor. So I really appreciate those efforts. We had some great presentations tonight, the Navigation Center, and of course, the police headquarters. So I really want to make sure that the community and residents are going to our website and looking at those presentations and really familiarizing yourself with them, just so that you can stay ahead of everything and know what's going on in our community and just how important these projects are going to be to Garden Grove now and in the future. And I think there was, oh, and I also just wanted to congratulate Chief Alfara again. His swearing-in and badge pinning ceremony was last night, and my goodness, was it meaningful. I don't think there was a dry eye in the place. He gave such a moving speech, so we're really excited to have his leadership and dedication to the department and to the city. And I also, over the weekend, we celebrated the Tet Parade, and we were all there, kind of crammed in that fire truck, but we made it. I think I was waving like this the whole time. But it was such a beautiful, beautiful day and a wonderful parade, and just so many festivities in this community. We're so diverse, and there's so much strength in that, and just so many beautiful celebrations, and I always really appreciate and enjoy being a part of them. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna pick up a little bit where Stephanie left off. It was a wonderful Tet Parade, and thank you for the city of Westminster putting that on, and we had the benefit of that. And of course, we rented out or loaned our stage for them, and they used it most efficiently and effectively. So congratulations to Westminster City and their council people, Mayor, for a very auspicious event. We here in Garden Grove are, should be proud of the Flower Street event. I did graced it, and we had a very good turnout, no incident at all. So I'm pleased to report back that any controversial issues that might have come up was diffused, and we did have, did not have any political issues, and I'm quite proud of it. And Scott and I did show up to their media presentation early on, and I spoke, and I said, you know, let's support this first time, but let's hope it's not gonna be the last. And from this year's event, I think maybe they'll come back, and I think we should welcome them back. They've conducted themselves quite honorably, and I want to give a shout-out to them and everybody who's came, and then we had, it's something new in our city. Hopefully, it becomes a tradition. So I thank you, everyone, for signing on to the proclamation. It's not my idea, but I did tweak it a little bit because I wanted to be culturally sensitive and also to be in line with our sensibility as far as celebrating the Tet Lunar New Year. So thank you, everyone. Mayor also had his input for that, and I hope that's gonna set a tradition also, and I'm very proud of it as Garden Grover and as a resident that has supported a lot of different diverse cultural events, and it's one that we should keep with the traditions. And if anybody wants a copy of the proclamation, I think we should proudly hang it in our offices and provide it to our community groups because everyone should be celebrating in Tet. We celebrate month-long, so we're actually still in Tet. On a little less happy note, we've had a couple of tragedies in our city that is still being under investigation by the coroner's office. We've discovered a couple of deceased members, and I don't want to not mention them because I don't want anybody in this city to go unremembered or forgotten. They are a member, whether they're trans or homeless, we need to remember them, and as long as we know who they are, I do not believe they should remain nameless. I myself want to hold a candlelight vigil to the loss of lives, particularly those two members that were discovered this very month. So I want a moment of silence because I'm sure there are people who love them and miss them, and there's gonna be a lot of information coming out, and I want to share it with the community so we can all come together and celebrate each other and not leave anybody forgotten. And that's why the Navigation Center is so important. We can't build it fast enough. And I will just touch on what Stephanie said about Chief Alfara's event, his pinning last night. It was tremendous and very emotional, and because some of you did not attend, so I have to repeat a little bit so the community out there, just like Stephanie knows, that the chief, we have a very solid leader. He told a story about a recent incident where a victim of sexual assault who validly assisted our police department in identifying the suspect, and he's incarcerated. The chief gave her a coin, recognition for her bravery, and she told the chief a story, which I want to repeat here without plagiarizing his very, very beautiful speech, that she said to our police department that when she was younger, her brothers protected her, and when she called on our police department and our officers came, she saw them as her own brother, as family. And that I want to repeat because we are all family, and I'm proud of our chief and our department, and I asked for care and compassion from our department when I came on, and I see that in our chief and in our department. I see the care, and I see the compassion. On my last note, and I don't want to make it any longer, it is still the Lunar New Year, and we had a couple of tragedies, three shootings in the last three days, one in Monterey Park, and two more by the same assailant in Half Moon Bay. And I have written something very short I want to share with you. I want to send a letter to them on my personal letterhead, but if you guys want to share it, I'd be happy to email it, and we can all sign on or write our own, but it goes, "Dear City of Monterey Park, Half Moon Bay, it is with great sadness that we send this letter of condolences to your communities. In your time of tremendous loss and suffering at the hand of a violent offender that recklessly took the precious lives of your most beloved members, please take some comfort that we share in your pain and tragedy, and we'll always hold you." share in your pain and tragedy, and we'll always hold you in our prayers as we all struggle with the fallouts of these senseless attacks on the very foundation of our peace and security. We hope that everyone can come together and mitigate these risks before they happen again, and may our law enforcement agencies and court systems find justice for the victims and their families most assuredly and expeditiously. Respectfully, Joe Dovin, council member. And I do wish them the very best, these cities, because we are all a big family. I just came back from the League of Cities workshop with our city manager, and I learned a lot, Cindy was there. And we need to embrace each other and support each other in the hardest of times. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Stiles?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, a few items. One is I just want to highlight, you know, it's having Lisa introduce Craig Beck to us is gonna be really important for the scale and complexity of the project that we're about to undertake for building a new police headquarters. It's very complex. We've talked about making sure we have the capacity to get everything else done that we need to do. So bringing on somebody of his with his expertise and knowledge of doing a big project like this is really gonna pay off for us in the long run to manage a project of this scale and size. So I think we should all feel good about that. Secondly, so I do want to mention, related to the Navigation Center, on February twenty-eighth, we're gonna be bringing back the next set of compliance contract awards that we'll be asking you to do, so that'll be important. We're laser-focused on keeping this project moving. Navigation Center is of utmost importance to us, so we're really gonna be working on that. And I believe on the twenty-eighth, we're also gonna be asking CalOptima and our other partners to come forward and talk about the Street Medicine Pilot Program we're talking about doing. So all these things tie in together, and I think we'll be very interested to hear about what they're trying to do with the Street Medicine Program. So that'll be coming in February. I do want to mention really good news for this thirty-seventh straight year, do anything for thirty-seven years is pretty good, are the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States has once again recognized Garden Grove for its annual financial report. The report has been judged by the panel to meet the high standards of what a department financial, department should be doing, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate our financial story and motivate users and user groups to read the report. So this certificate, it's the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So that comes from the Government Finance Officers Association, which is the respected body that all local governments follow regarding financial accountability. I wanted, and we'll include that on our website, and I'll send the details to all of the council members as well. Just one other, a couple other comments. Assistant City Manager Maria Steip and I have been working really hard on the Republic Contract. As you know, we've initiated the Organic Waste Recycling Program, and I believe at our very next council meeting, we're gonna give you a pretty significant update report on the Republic Contract. I think you asked us to do that six months or so after it went into effect. So we're gonna have Republic here, our staff, we're gonna be reporting on the details and how that's been going and what our community should be expecting. So you can look for that report at our next, at our next council meeting. I also want to, just one more time, because we won't have another council meeting, but we are gonna start our bulky pickup drop-offs, and of course, our first location's gonna be in Councilmember Cindy Tran's District Three. I just want to remind everybody, that's gonna be Saturday, February eleventh, Garden Grove Park, ninety-three oh-one Westminster Boulevard. You can go on our website and see the details about that. It's gonna be from nine to eleven, and you can drop off your bulky items there. But then we're also gonna have events in all of the council districts, so the public can go and see the whole list of dates and times and locations. So one more shout-out for that February eleventh date. And then finally, finally, I too want to congratulate Chief Alfara on his, on his appointment as our police chief. As you know, that's always a very, very important appointment to any community. We've talked about the event that was held last night. It's already been posted on the front page of our website, so the community can go on, they can watch the whole event and listen to his speech, and Councilmember Dovin, you talked about care and compassion with our chief, and I think that was demonstrated last night in his comments and how he intends to lead this department. So we, I think we should all feel very, very good about that. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. General Counsel, do we have any need for closed session or anything to report out?
No, Mayor, nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight's meeting will be adjourned in memory of Charles Mitchell. Charles was a dedicated civic leader and active volunteer who moved to Garden Grove in nineteen seventy-three, where he raised two sons and a granddaughter. Those who knew Charles considered him to be a truly caring and humble man, eager and willing to give of his time to serve his community and beyond. A member of the American Legion, having served in the Army, as well as a member of the Forty and Eight, Charles was dedicated to helping veterans in numerous ways, including arranging free dental care, calling bingo games at the Veterans Hospital in Long Beach, and raising funds for nursing scholarships. The list of Charles volunteer activities is endless, just as his dedication to his country, community, and his family. My sincere condolences to his wife, Diane, and his family and friends. With that, we will stand adjourned.